The Victorville Church of the Netherland in a pleasure of allegiance will be led in the pleasure of allegiance by our Victorville Police Chief Cliff Reynolds.
Heavenly Father, we are so thankful this evening for the privilege to gather in this place. Thank you for the freedom that you have given to us. We ask that your Holy Spirit would speak to our hearts. Whatever matters come, Lord. We ask that the best for the folks who live in this area would be thought of. Grant to us your wisdom. Move within our hearts in a way that we would be an example to those in our surrounding areas. Let those who are supervising grant them your wisdom. Grant us your people the knowledge to follow your will. Father, in the name of Jesus, we ask for all these things.
Tonight, we are here also to honor our military personnel who are serving our country and they're in hard way either in Iraq or Afghanistan. The first one we have is Tim J. Casper, serving with the U.S. Marine Corps in Iraq. His mother, Toni Casper, will accept a certificate, and this is for our banner program. I'd like to thank you for the service that your son has given to this country, and I'll give you an opportunity to do something on behalf of your son.
Great that the city of Victorville is doing this for my son.
Maybe some of the audience don't know about the program, but we do have the banners that will go up on our street standards, and they're there, and when our servicemen return, we bring the banners down and then we make a presentation to them when they get back home. The other one we have is Andrew Nathaniel Burnt, again with the United States Marine Corps, serving in Afghanistan. His father, Rick, is accepting the certificate. Thank you, and can you say a few words on behalf of your son, please?
Fellow resident in Camp Bastion, Afghanistan, and I wanted to say, oh, soldiers there wait about two to three hours to send one email. They get a couple of minutes to do that. He's pretty close to the front lines, and they do accept casualties there. I want you to understand the struggles they do go through. I need a big favor from you. I need about seventy-five to a hundred drywall or wood screws long enough to get through a one-inch-thick plywood. We are trying to build shelves to open up space in our tent. They are crowded. They have, the tents were twenty, and there are up to thirty people per tent, so they need some materials. I'm not going back to Kandahar, and I may be here until Christmas. Save all the receipts for the screws and the charger, and if you can send it priority, that would be even better. I will reimburse you when I get back. Thank you. I'm very proud of him. You should be proud of him being a resident of Victorville. Thank you.
We also have Azek Soto, serving again with the Marine Corps in Iraq, and Mother Patricia will accept a certificate.
Just wanted to show you all my son and just tell you how proud I am of him and all our servicemen out there. They give up a lot for us, and we need to be.
Thank you very much, and we are to be reminded that we do have many people overseas, men and women, serving our country, and hopefully, very soon, we'll be able to bring all the banners down and all our kids will come back safely and into our family. Also have a plaque here, and this is for Luis Valenzuela. Luis, Luis has repaired those banners because being in the desert, of course, you know about the wind, and they get a bit once in a while. So Luis repaired them, he's kept them, but beyond that, doing all this work, Luis has been a friend of the city of Victorville for, I don't know, twenty-five years or so since we've known him. He used to repair all our turnout equipment for the fire department, do all the upholstery on the trucks for us. He never charged for it all this year. He's a good friend of the city and a good friend of the fire service and a good friend of the military. Luis, this is the recognition and support of our men and women in uniform in the city of Victorville. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate this a lot and for letting me, thank you for letting me be part of this good project so we can show our appreciation to their parents and our heroes.
Thank you, Luis. At this time, we'll go into our public comment section, and we'll cover all the agendas. This is an opportunity for the citizens to voice concerns and issues to the city council. We cannot respond because we don't know what the issues are. However, we'll either have someone from our staff contacting you, or it will be agendized if it merits that. I know we have a room, a full house today, tonight. I would like to ask everyone, please, and I know there's a lot of emotions running through the room here tonight, I would like to ask you that we refrain from any outbursts or applause in anything that would disrupt this meeting. I would ask that to please let us continue with our meeting and to have an orderly meeting so we can get our work done, and then at the end of the meeting, we can all go home. I would appreciate that. So at this time, we will open up the public comment section, and I have four cards for the public comments. Paul Wosley.
I'm a resident of Victorville for sixteen years. It has come to our attention within the last few weeks. I'm a member of the West Winds Golf Club at the Logistics Airport in Victorville, and we have been told that there is a possible closure of the West Winds Golf Course. And I'm here to plead to the mayor and the city council to look into this matter, and we have approximately sixty-five members in our golf club that participate in monthly activities at the golf course. Silverado High School and I believe Mesa Linda Middle use that course as a home course for their athletic programs. And it would be a tragedy that we would lose the only driving range that's in our city limits, other than the private course at Spring Valley Lake. We have eight to fifteen children that come out and practice on the weekends and take lessons from Ron Atkins, our club pro. And our concerns are that, you know, our city would be losing a fine facility along with a place for kids to take part in activities in a very wholesome sport and outdoor sport, and it would be a tragedy that we would lose this golf course. And I know the fiscal impact on the city is quite demanding with the recession that we're in and our financial matters that we're in as a city. The civic impact it would have, losing a course like that would be, I think, monumental. And I would like to ask the council to, Mr. Cabrios, to please look into that for us. We would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I also have a, I think it's Clayton.
I have a subject of potholes. I better make people know what a pothole is. How can we close the potholes for our streets, especially our main streets? In nineteen eighty, the city of Victorville on Seventh Street paved the street with asphalt and added ground rubber, from tires to the mix. Today, this street has had very little maintenance, more than twenty-nine years. How are we to pay for this? People in our city probably will be like, they would like to pay for the potholes near their home. Put a charge on the potholes. For our cars, this is a must. It will save many from costly repairs. Have the newspapers write a review and explain where these potholes are located. Follow-up, I pray the council will support my proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Clay. Thank you.
I'll leave this note here with the.
With the clerk. Next, we have Norm Miller. Or number three, okay. And we have, Dorothy, you also want the water or you want item one?
Mayor and councilwomen and men, I have a letter here which I'd like passed out to every single one of you to find out exactly what's going on. Okay, this letter was sent to me, and I'm very concerned about it. We have asked and asked to have Eucalyptus put through to three ninety-five. We've got one hundred and seventy-five or two hundred signatures wanting this street put through. We don't have the money. Why don't we have the money? Eucalyptus was listed in two thousand seven, two thousand eight to be put through. Where did that money go? We don't seem to have any money to do it in the last two years. Why? Where did it go? This is something we need to find out because money's disappearing, everything's going crazy right now, and we need things straightened out so the people know what's going on. Thank you.
At this time, we'll go into the regular agenda. The first one is the Library Board of Trustees. Do we have any revisions?
No revisions.
We do have the consent calendar.
Move for approval.
On the written communications, we have item number four. It's a request to review the automation services agreement between the Victorville City Library and the San Bernardino County Library System.
Approval?
By the way, that was a decrease of ten percent from the previous year. I checked on that, so something.
The next is the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority and also the Airport Authority, and Councilman Caldwell is the chairman of both of those ports, who will turn the meeting over to him.
Thank you, Mayor Cabralis. The only item on the rail authority agenda is the consent calendar. I'm not aware of any add-ons to this agenda.
For approval.
That concludes the rail authority agenda. The airport authority agenda does have an add-on, an urgency item. I'd ask Mr. D. Bortnowsky to structure that for us.
As Chairman Caldwell, we need to add an item pursuant to government code five four nine five four point two B two on a finding that there is immediate need to take action on the item, and the item arose after the posting of the agenda. The item in question is an MOU between the Airport Authority and Subic Clark Alliance for Development Council. My understanding is that the airport director got knowledge of a potential signing of this MOU. The document was not prepared prior to the posting of the agenda. However, there's supposed to be a signing ceremony next week, and you don't have a meeting prior to that time, so you need to take a motion to add it and then consider the item.
I'll move the findings for the addition to the agenda. Has been added. Item three is the consent calendar. Motion would be in order. Item four is a request to approve the Third Amendment to the agreement with Avantura Aviation for the lease of Building seven three three at SCLA. Motion would be in order.
For approval. Clear again.
My screen's blank.
Let me reset it. Not coming up.
Should we do a voice vote?
Do a voice vote, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, none carried unanimously. Item five is a request to approve a license agreement with the American Red Cross, High Desert Chapter two seventy-two, for, excuse me, for two hundred and seventy square feet of office space at SCLA.
For approval.
Item six is a request to approve an MOU with the U.S. Air Force that serves to protect Air Force-installed monitoring and extraction wells.
Move for approval.
And item seven is proposed Resolution oh nine oh oh two, which if adopted, would authorize the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority to continue appropriation and expenditures based upon the fiscal year two thousand eight, two thousand and nine budget. I might add parenthetically, this same agenda item will appear on all of the other agendas through the course of the evening. Questions or comments on this item from members of.
Can we vote for all of them at the same time, or do we have to take a minute?
Mr. D. Bortnowsky?
Certainly could. We should identify the numbers of each of the items, however, in order to make sure.
Well, it's item seven on the Airport Authority. It is item six on the Redevelopment Agency. It is item six on the Water District and on the City Council agenda is.
Item eighteen.
Item eighteen.
Move for approval on all of them?
Then we have the add-on, which Mr. D. Bortnowsky has already structured, which is the MOU. Questions or comments from members of the council regarding this urgency add-on? Not a motion would be in order?
Approval?
Second.
Yes, Chairman Caldwell, that will have to be a voice vote because that is not an item on the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, none carried unanimously. That concludes the Airport Authority agenda.
We'll now go into the Victorville Redevelopment Agency agenda. Any revisions?
Yes, on written communications item number five, there has been a request from the staff to continue that to the meeting of July seventh.
We do have a continuing public hearing, and this public hearing is called to hear arguments for or against a request to adopt Resolution number R zero nine zero zero two entitled Resolution of the Victorville Redevelopment Agency Approving the Four-Five-Year Implementation Plan for the Bear Valley Hook Boulevard Redevelopment Project Area. I will now open the public hearing on item number three. Anyone wishing to oyster opinion for or against item number three, please step to the podium. Anyone opposed or for item number three? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on item number three and entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Item number four is the consent calendar. Move for approval. Item number five has been continued to July seventh. We'll move to item number six. It's a request to adopt Resolution number R zero nine zero zero six. A resolution, oh, we adopted that. Okay. That ends the RDA meeting. Victorville Water District Agenda, we don't have any revisions. We do have public hearing, and the public hearing will call to hear arguments for or against the adoption of Resolution numbers VWD zero nine zero zero eight and VWD zero nine zero zero nine. The resolution is titled A Resolution of the Victorville Water District Making its Determination to Fix Levy and Collect Standby and Availability Charges for Water Improvement District Number One for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Eight, Two Thousand Nine. And we do have, we have two cards on item number three.
Chairman Cabralis, excuse me, there are, just for clarification, there are two resolutions with this item.
Resolution A and B.
Correct.
Okay. And we have somebody here to speak on behalf of Marilyn East.
Chairman Cabralis, I have a letter that.
Letter, okay.
Was requested to be read into the record on this.
Norm Miller, item number three.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Norman Miller with the Golden Triangle Ad hoc Committee. And in respect to the Water District's agenda item, I think it's the one on loaning the money to the airport, and I just want to say I'm really disappointed in the way the city has ended up being run. If you were operating a private business, you'd all be on welfare by now. There is no excuse for the millions of dollars you've spent over the years with no return on our investments. You ran out of our tax money, so now you want to borrow from the Water District with no guarantee it will be paid back. Also, I hear your credit is so low that you couldn't borrow enough money to buy a car, let alone a treatment plant. So how do you expect to pay back the Water District loan? I understand these loans are also to include interest. What will the rate of this interest be? In talking with LAFCO and the Mojave Water Agency, they indicated that the city should check with a water attorney about this loan to be sure that it's a proper loan. Thank you.
Any questions on item number three on the Water District and to adopt Resolution A and B?
This is strictly for standby, and it's just housekeeping. This goes on year after year with the Water Districts. Now go ahead and make a motion, because I live in one of them, and make a motion to approve it.
Cabralis, you need to read in the letter as part of the public hearing first.
Go ahead.
This is from Marlene East. I am sending you copies of the standby protests that have been sent to me and the property owners in our city of Victorville. Please note all of the highlighted areas as they are mistakes. I am also challenging the standby fees being imposed as the notices have the wrong year posted. It should state two thousand nine, two thousand ten. Therefore, this fee cannot be imposed legally as the wrong year has been stated, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, instead of two thousand nine, two thousand ten. Please postpone the voting on these fees until this can be corrected and posted for the current year pursuant to Water Code Section three one zero three two point one and three one zero three two point two.
Your attorney?
If you want to comment on that, I believe that the item is appropriate, and you are able to take action on tonight. You should formally also close the public hearing after you've taken.
Other questions? We'll now close the public hearing and would entertain a motion.
I made a motion.
Approval of the consent counter?
Second. Second.
Item number five, request to award a construction contract to Aaron's Corporation for the SCLA Industrial Wastewater Treatment Plant, subcontract package number two, process mechanical and piping in the amount of $4,846,800. Entertained a motion?
I have a comment I'd like to make, please. This is money that we are going to be pulling from the Water District to pay for this contract. Right?
I asked Mr. Lamson, I knew there was going to be some questions in regard to this, and I asked him to be available to explain exactly how this is working. I know it's confusing and technical, and there's some real concerns about it, and I'd ask that John McGlade, or Reggie Lamson, I'm sorry. Keith will answer that, okay, because we've all been working on this. So Keith Metzler is Director of Economic Development. Put that aside.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this item is one of a multitude of items that involve our fulfilling of the SCLA Infrastructure Funding Program, which was a program that we presented to the council in February of this year, and altogether it outlined a total funding need for infrastructure required at SCLA totaling about $67 million. Among that amount, the largest component is about $46 million, which is intended specifically for the SCLA wastewater treatment facility. That's the name of the facility. The facility is actually to be owned and operated by the Victor Valley Water District. When we had first prepared the presentation for you, we have evolved, we have had some changes to the original structure, capital structure, and the ownership structure of how this was going to work. And you might recall that when we had originally presented this project to you, the SCLA wastewater treatment plant was to be owned by the city of Victorville and to be funded out of sanitary district funds for a number of reasons. As we evolved, resulting from that approval, we determined from a financial management perspective, not only for the city, but also for the Water District, that there was a lot of sense in actually having the Water District become the operator and the provider of wastewater within the city. In fact, there are water codes specifically that permit the Water District to become the wastewater provider for the, for the city. So we had followed that funding program up in April with you and identified a clear structure to which we would rely on the Water District to not only be the responsible party to build the plant, but also to be the responsible party to fund the ultimate construction. The funding is fairly complex. It involves short-term financing needs along with the goal to take out short-term financing with long-term, long-term debt. As a part of that, it was always contemplated in each of those two structures, whether it was the city or the Water District, that on the short-term basis, until we can get an intermediate financing piece in place, that we would fund the lead items, particularly the awards of contracts and the initial starts of construction, with cash on hand, with the expectation that as we are able to procure the necessary intermediate pieces, that we would take those cash expenditures out and repay the, the respective district. That is still currently our structure. That structure was further memorialized in May, as the Water District did take forward an actual loan agreement that was approved that entitled the use of Water District cash up to $45 million to be used for that same exact purpose, so that we could allow ourselves to make the necessary appropriations to keep the overall construction of the project on schedule. Right now, that $45 million piece, it's still expected to be taken out with, with the short-term, I'm sorry, with the intermediate financing. I, I guess I should make a clarification with respect to the comment that we were loaning this money from the Water District to the SCLA. Actually, it's not, not that at all. We're actually loaning the money within the Water District. We're just loaning the money from the water fund to the wastewater enterprise. So it's not really a control that's leaving the hands of the Water District and going to another authority such as, as, as the airport. Currently, we're working diligently to get those intermediate place, financing pieces in place. We're actually before committee at one of the rating agencies that we've been working with to get ratings on a modified, um, intermediate piece. We were expecting to go to, to committee today. It looks like we're going to go to committee tomorrow. But as we get that approval, then we would actually follow through with what was originally intended, and that's actually selling wastewater revenue notes that would take out the Water District's cash.
This really is for building the wastewater treatment plant?
That is correct.
Okay, and the city council agenda is up to $9 million?
Yes, if I might, that is-
On item 13?
Yes.
Okay, it shows that the amount is $9 million to be taken from the Water District.
That's correct, and that's to, to make the necessary appropriations. That is specifically for related infrastructure to the plant. That's actually the pipework, so that you can create the delivery system to get the actual flows to, to the physical plant.
And this is for Dr. Pepper?
Uh, the, the plant is for Dr. Pepper, and it's also to collect domestic waste from within the city. We're actually going to be diverting up to 1.5 MGD of flow to help balance out the operational needs of the plant.
My concern here is that I don't want us to see the same thing happen to our Water District that it has happened to another Water District in another city where they completely depleted their cash. And we're spending cash that we don't have, and we're not planning for the cash before we okay a project. I feel that we could have done a little more investigating and working with VVWRA, expanding the water treatment plant that's in, right now in existence. Thank you, Keith, for your information.
I, I just want to put my comment in since you added that last bit there. This council has investigated the options, especially going with the regional plant, and quite clearly, at least from my point of view, at least as one member of this council, I was confident that their business model was not going to be adequate to secure the Dr. Pepper plant. It would have gone away. Secondly, I believe firmly that our operation of that plant out there is going to be far more cost-effective and job-attractive than going with the regional plant and tying up our hands a bit more with the JPA. I wish, you know, hindsight's 20/20, but I wish we'd never been in that, but we are. So here we go, we're building this plant, and we're relieving, excuse me, we're relieving about one and a half million acre, uh, gallons, how do you, was it cubic feet or gallons, into this system versus the, the regional plant. So it, it relieves the pressure for the rest of the JPA to benefit from that growth as well. So this is an excellent business activity. I think we've used the money wisely, and it will pay dividends in the future. So for my part at least, I think we've analyzed both options and have selected the proper one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first would concur with Councilman Rothschild's remarks. I was involved in many of the discussions with the folks from VVWRA, and they, in fact, tried to put together a proposal that would address the needs both from a flow standpoint as well as from a financial standpoint, and they simply were unable to come up with a financial model or an operational model that would accommodate this facility. The facility has an extremely high level of toxic discharge that would have to be pre-treated to the very least in any event before you can send it to VVWRA. Existing rate structures that exist at VVWRA would have not supported the, the financial model that was so much a part of the decision to bring Dr. Pepper Schnapple here and the 300 to 500 jobs that come with it. I have great confidence in Mr. Metzler and Mr. Lamson. They've analyzed this every which way. They made a huge step forward in finding both the mechanical and the financial process to make it work. They gave a full and detailed presentation before this city council some two months or so ago, and I, I don't disagree with Ms. Allman's concerns about making sure we don't get to where another city got. I think that's an important comment that she makes, but I, I have, I have enough confidence in Mr. Cox, Mr. Robinson, Mr. Metzler, and Mr. Lamson to know that that is not going to happen. And other than this vote that's before us tonight, we wouldn't have the Dr. Pepper Schnapple project and the resulting jobs that come with it. So I'm supportive of the agenda item.
Obviously, this discussion occurred in some detail at the February 17, 2009 council The fact that, that this council had the opportunity to deliberate on the funding program for the industrial wastewater treatment plant at that time, I contemplated that staff would be coming back to us for awarding of bids on various different functions and parts of that plant. I'm definitely concerned that we have not been able to get that interim financing in place, and I'm, I'm hopeful that that's coming in short order, because these, these funds that are, we're pulling out of the Water District Fund to the wastewater treatment fund, although they're within the Water District, and that's, I think, an important point to make, they need to be paid back. And I, for one, will do everything to make sure that that's exactly what happens. As soon as we have that funding, those funds need to be returned and that, those cash reserves replenished. But I think, you know, we've, we've haggled over this issue, and I, we came to an agreement on February 17. What we see before us tonight is just a part of fulfilling that agreement that we made on, on February 17. So, you know, unless we want to go back and pull that off the table, these are, these are obligations that we have to move forward, and so it's, it's frustrating to me that we don't already have the interim financing in place. I, I voiced that with the city manager as well as the Economic Development Director. They know my frustration with that. This, that needs to be taken care, care of post haste.
Thank you. I, I agree with everything you said, Councilman McHagren. I, I am on the Victorville Wastewater Authority, or Victor Valley Wastewater Authority, and I, I too looked at the business plans, and the, the business plan from the city supported us doing it, and it was difficult for me, because I am on that board, and I, and I support the, the regional effort. But I did look at the business plan and, and it supported the city doing it. Having said that, I am concerned like, like Ryan is in regards to, and Ms. Allman in regards to the, uh, the money from the Water District, and it, and it has to be firmly stated that it needs to go back as soon as you get it.
Just to make one other observation, it might be a bit subtle for some out there, and maybe not for others, though, but again, this comes back to our, the audit company that we had hired. Had they done their job, this, that audit would have been done a year ago. We would have been, this audit would have been done. Our ratings would have been fine, the bonding, we're within a few weeks of that being taken care of. I'm very confident that the replacement bonds that we would have had in our hands some time back will be there in short order, as soon as our, our audit finishes in the next few weeks. That's my personal opinion on it. But again, that's, again, a reflection of how this audit company failed miserably and in fact injured this city dramatically. We've corrected it, and we're moving on. But bonding, bonding is important, and the perception is important. And until we get our, our audit done in a few weeks, we have to wait on that. That's why this, these actions were taken here. So I don't disagree with what has been said here, I just, there is a reason for that. It wasn't any mismanagement or anything else like that. I'd move the motion.
Second.
Item number six, we've took action on that. We'll now move to the city council agenda. Do, we don't have any revision.
Just one revision on public hearing item number eight. That item is to be removed from the agenda. It is going to be re-advertised and rescheduled for the July 7 meeting.
We do have a public hearings, and we do, we have items three and four, and there are several resolutions in each item. Item three deals with the L-MAT, which are your landscaping and maintenance districts. And then we have the number, item number four, the DFAT, and that's the drainage facility fees. And then we have the MAT, which are your maintenance facilities. So I would like to open up the public hearing on items number three, four, and five. And at this time, the public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to voice opposition or, or support for item number three, four, and five, please come to the podium. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Entertained a motion for item three, four, and five.
I'll move adoption of item three A through H, item four A through C, and item five A and B, and the resolutions that accompany each of those individual items.
Second.
Councilmember Allman, may I get a vote from you?
Thank you.
Item number six is a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against the introduction of ordinance number 2218 entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Victorville, Amending Chapter 12.28 of the Victorville Municipal Code by Adding a New Section 12.28.065 Title 'Stopping or Standing Prohibited for Recreational Vehicles, Oversized Vehicles, and Trailers on Public Streets, Right-Aways, Highways, or Alleys.'"
I have a quick comment on this item also. There's, Mr. Webb, there's part in here that I hope we'll take one, one issue at a time, where it says permits would also be available for out-of-town visitors for a period not to exceed two weeks. If code enforcement can go out there and see what the street looks like, if you try and put a mobile home, um, mobile home, motorhome on our street, it's not possible to have it there for two weeks. You live in a cul-de-sac, and if you put that there, we're going to have more accidents. You can't see to go around the corner.
Yes, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Allman, absolutely. We will either be requesting a site plan showing clearly where they are. We will look on an aerial, and if need be, we will visit the site.
You did a wonderful job, Otter. Thank you.
The public hearing is still open? Anyone wishing to address the council? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Entertained a motion?
Move for approval?
Mayor Cabralis, can the motion please include waive of further readings since it is an ordinance?
To waive further readings.
Item number seven, public hearing called to hear arguments for or against the adoption of resolution number 09034 entitled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, California Making Determination and Confirming Assessments and Proceedings for Unpaid Rubbish Collection, Sewer Use Fees, Storm Drain Fees, Hazardous Waste Fees, and Assembly Bill 939 Recycling Fees." I will now open up the public hearing on item number seven. Anyone wishing to address the city council?
Mayor Cabralis, Larry Kempton, Apple Valley, and former owner, former resident of Victorville. We still own a house here, and I didn't have time to capture a public card to speak since I was attending another meeting. Terry, I can remember sitting this way, I'm pretty sure, oh, we sat this way, in another city council room, same place, different area, kind of. And I thought that you said that there would be never a bigger bill than $10, somewhere in that arena, years ago. Now I think we're getting bills for 100 or so for the unoccupied house. And I'd sure like to know what you do about an unoccupied house, that you're not flushing the toilet, not carrying any trash, not doing anything with except trying to sell, and you still get hit with these terrible bills. I wonder if you could answer that for me?
Well, I can't answer it. Jim? We have somebody from staff that can answer that question.
Well, these bills, I, actually, I can't answer it, because these are unpaid rubbish, sewer, storm drain, hazardous-
I understand that, J.C., but if we didn't pay it, you'd have a 4,000-square-foot house by leaning it.
Oh, I have no idea.
And what I'm getting at is the high bills, so you don't lean it.
I don't know what the statements were made. I wasn't-
How do you avoid it?
Why don't you give us the, give Carol Lee the specific address that you're talking about?
I'm positive that everybody here knows what that address is, but I will do that.
No, just give her-
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to comment. I have no recollection of the event you're referring to, Mr. Kempton. I'm not saying it didn't happen, or that it did happen.
Close getting old, Terry.
Well, Mr. Kempton, my wife is sure I have Alzheimer's, so, you know, I may have said it and forgot it.
Could be an old bill, too.
By the way, I do respect my-
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I will now close the public hearing and move for adoption of resolution number 09034.
Go move.
Item number eight has been removed. We'll go to item number nine, which is a present calendar.
May I have approval?
Second. Item number 10 is a request to ratify the expenditure plan for the 2009 JAG allocation, and also authorize, as the city manager or as the deputy to me, to process all documents required under this program.
For approval?
Item number 11, request to adopt resolution number 09048 entitled "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville Accepting the Department of Energy's Block Grant and Authorizing Staff to Create an Expenditure Plan and Process on Necessary Documentation." Item number 12, request for council to approve an amendment to the service-provided agreement between the City of Victorville and PB World for Traffic Modeling and Analysis of the High Desert Corridor Project, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Approval?
Item 13, this is the request for removal of the financing condition and ratification of Water District loan for the contract to Southern California Pipeline Construction Corp., berated for the construction of the SGLA sewer trunk lines in the amount of $9,86,507.10, with repayment to occur when funding has been finalized.
Move approval?
Number 14 is request to approve the Development Impact Fee Credit Agreement with Rello Victorville Limited Corporation, CEO Rello Development LLC, for regional improvements in the amount of $173,934 for the construction of a fully centralized intersection at the intersection of Cantina and Mojave Roads.
For approval?
Number 15 is to request to approve the PANED amended cooperative agreement between the City of Victorville and the State of California Transportation Department for the High Desert Corridor Project, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement in the amount of $200,000.
Approval?
Mayor Cabralis, may I get your vote on that?
Number 16, request to approve the cooperative agreement between the City of Victorville and County of San Bernardino for a new traffic signal and road improvements at Elavado Road, Luna Road, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement in the amount of $20,000.
May I have approval?
Councilman Caldwell, may I get a vote from you?
Number 17, request to introduce and adopt interim ordinance number 2238 entitled "An Urgency Interim Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville Adopting a Moratorium on Establishment of Medical Marijuana at Existing Buildings."
Mayor Cabralis, yes, I would request that you entertain this urgency ordinance, and with one very minor change in the title. It references distribution of medical marijuana at existing businesses. I'd like to delete the word "existing" to eliminate any ambiguity. The ordinance, the body of the ordinance makes it clear that it pertains to all businesses, and we just want to delete the word "existing." If you desire to proceed with this, then we also need the motion to include a waiver of further reading of the title. You should also note that the necessary findings and determinations are contained both in the staff reports and the body of the ordinance justifying this for the purposes of health, safety, and welfare of the community.
entertain a motion to introduce and adopt the ordinance?
I'll move the introduction with the minor language change that Mr. DeBortenaski just mentioned, deleting the word "existing."
Item number 18, the request for adoption resolution number 09049.
We did that.
Oh.
Done.
This is the same one, okay. Item number 19, request to approve the cuts in salaries and benefits as detailed in staff report. And I would like to turn this over to Mr. Cox.
I had counsel indicated some time ago that we were experiencing, the City of Victorville was experiencing budgetary problems, that income was less than expected, and that expenditures had been extremely high, that we had obligations contractually that could not be avoided. And the end result was that we would probably end June 30 without being able to balance the budget. I also indicated that at that time, that probably for the first time, at least in my memory, and as it turned out in the memory of the council, I would be making recommendations in order to try to end June 30 fiscal year with money in the general fund as required, not be in a deficit position, and also to attempt to make a budget at least close to being balanced, that we could continue to monitor on a month-to-month basis, continuing through 2009, 2010 fiscal year, and that would probably result in additional cuts throughout the year. But severe cuts would have to be made even to adopt the budget for July 1. We have established several teams that have been working extremely hard on trying to bring this budget closure to a point that we can continue carrying out the services that we tried to carry out. And initially, I indicated that we would do our best to see that there wasn't a reduction in service. Later, I indicated to the council that certainly there would be a reduction in service, and the council indicated publicly that we should try, as far as possible, not to have a reduction in police and fire. Touch on that just briefly. We have worked very closely with the county, Sheriff's Department, Fire Division, Fire Department, and we have been assured that there will be, will not be a reduction in service, although the budgets will be less than for this coming year than of this previous year. But with some advance notice, police and fire both have been reducing costs and take cost-cutting measures where they can. And we'll still have some discussions in regard to the Fire Department, particularly as it applies to one station. We'll hold that discussion aside. The police budget was not submitted in time to get in this agenda tonight. But with assurances from the council of a continuing budget, so that there will not be a cut in service, if it continues in service in July 7, we will have the Police Department budget submitted to the city council for approval. For this item, I indicated we have severe budget problems. I had made a request for all the departments to submit a budget with a 20% reduction in spending, and they did so. And in some instances, you need to know that there just can't be across-the-board cuts, although we originally requested across-the-board, so that every single department would be forced to look at each and every item and reduce wherever possible. And they actually submitted proposed budgets with a 20% reduction, only to find that we were still so far apart and not wanting to reach insolvency. We went back and requested. They reduced the budgets, showing a 32% reduction in spending. And at that point, it was impossible for most of the departments to have a 32% reduction without having a reduction in personnel, which means that there would be reorganizations, retirements were possible, reassignments, and layoffs. When I presented this matter to the city council as a preliminary measure to prepare for what may be coming, the council was unanimous in directing me to go back and reassess the financial position of the city, to see if it was all possible to avoid laying off employees and to determine if there were other cuts that were possible. Tonight, I have submitted what will be step one of the cuts that we have recommended, and they are outlined, and I will cover those. But those combined provide for savings to the general fund of $1,504,000 and to the other funds, and most of those funds are restricted funds in some way or other than the general fund, $2,271,000. And with those cuts, we still have a budget gap of approximately $6.8 million. I have indicated to the council that as we have gone back and reviewed income expenditures, and we continue to do so now on a daily basis, that I could not find any way to avoid the layoffs. We have had a large number of individuals that have elected to retire because they are eligible or so close to it, that they have elected to do so. And we have talked about a large number that we have to reduce our workforce by. We have gone over each of the departmental budgets and division budgets, and we have gone through preliminary reorganizations that have not been finalized, because that will be a part of the budget process to go to the council. And in order to make a determination of what we are going to be expending on employee and benefits, this item must necessarily be decided first tonight. Assuming that the council approves those recommendations, we have identified, not individuals, but depending upon the department and the individuals to retire and the changes, some were between 60 and 75 positions to be laid off. And even with that, we are still $2.1 million short. This is severe. I have reviewed this so many times that I'm not- I have reviewed this so many times that I'm not sure where else to look. I've involved all the departments. We have, we have obviously made recommendations here that's going to be disappointing to a lot of people and very difficult for a lot of people. We felt that the cuts that we have recommended tonight are an absolute, and I would just simply like to state again, if there was any way I could avoid this, I would do so. But I can't. We have a staff of people here who will answer any and all the questions as they relate to these issues. Available for questions, Mr. Mayor and Counsel.
Before we get into questions from the council, I have two cards for this item. Kay Schultz, item 19, and also Evanet Som.
Hi, my name is, I've got a cold. My name is Kay Schultz, and I live in Victorville. And I'm just here to, first of all, comment that I am a retired employee from the city of Victorville, and I am absolutely shocked and disgusted with the condition that the city finds itself in today. And I don't know if it's because the council has just gotten complacent and hasn't asked enough questions, hasn't paid attention to the red flags. I don't know what the problem is, but you ultimately are the ones that make the decisions for this city, and the sum of the decisions you've made have jeopardized the city's financial stability, and in turn, the employees are going to have to pay the price. There are employees out here that if they lose their jobs, they lose their houses. So maybe we need to look, when it comes to laying off, maybe we need to look at the six-figure salary employees who are also a part of the decision-making process, because the rank-and-file people had nothing to do with the decisions that were made. I just can't believe that you guys would even consider laying off these employees, most of whom's workloads haven't decreased, some of the departments are still bringing in the same amount of revenue, and you're going to do some kind of a ridiculous across-the-board layoff. And as Mr. Cox said, this isn't going to take care of the deficit. So what are the next things? Is there going to be a future layoff in the works? Are you going to eventually file bankruptcy? I mean, the city is in such crappy condition that anything is possible at this point, and you guys need to be ashamed of yourselves. You really need to be ashamed of yourselves. I know you like to blame a lot of it on John Roberts, but ultimately, it was your choices that put the city in this position.
Ed?
Mayor, council members, I'm very nervous about talking. I'm not a public speaker. I'm a city employee, a present city employee. I'm only going to comment about the subsidy to our fringe benefits. I know you're all, the economy is hard on everybody, and I know, I wouldn't want to be in any one of your shoes right now to make these decisions. But when I came to this city approximately seven years ago, our fringe benefits were $626, and our pay was, you know, very good compared to other cities around here. Apple Valley in comparison, their fringe benefits were in the $500 range, and their salaries were a little higher. Today, our fringe benefits are still $626. We were told in prior meetings that it was cheaper for the city to do subsidies than it was to increase the fringe benefits for everybody. That was a choice that the city management made to do that, to save money. So I believe today, Apple Valley's, I know Diane Ramirez will be able to have more accurate answers than I would. Apple Valley's fringe benefits are in the $700 range. Hesperia's are in the $800 range. Ours are still exactly the same. So I know there's going to have to be cuts, but for our fringe benefits, I was hoping we could do something. If you do have to cut our fringe benefits, could we just do a percentage cut? If you're a family member, taking a big hit with that whole cut is devastating to some most people that are actually working in the field. I know fringe benefit is not part of our salary, but the bottom line is to most people that are working in the field, that's going to be an additional 10% cut of their salary, and that's going to force a lot of people to lose their houses, and, I mean, they just won't be able to afford it. I personally moved up here because, I chose the city of Victorville because they had a good medical plan. I owned my own business before coming here, so I do understand how business works. I chose Victorville because I did like your, how you were a pro-business, very active. I considered it more of a business than a city, and I thought it was very good moves. So I'm hoping that you can make decisions. I'm sure I'm glad I'm not in your shoes to do them, but you could help some of the people in the working field. Some of the management, I know if they take the cut, they can afford it, but most of the workers cannot. So maybe you could just do a percentage cut of the fringes instead of the whole thing. Thank you.
That's all the cards I have for item 19.
Wait. I didn't get a chance to fill out the card. First lady that spoke really hit the damn nail on the head. I've been around here, not since Christ was a young man, but for a while. Mike used to live in my neighborhood, where I have a house for sale that we haven't sold yet. And I never could quite understand. I'm a businessperson. Some of you are businesspeople. Some of you are government, one of you, two of you are government employees. But why we needed to get into the electric business is absolutely mind-boggling when you guys decided to become private sector people. Amazing. I mean, you couldn't even get your kids through high school. In your mind, you're running the city. All of my kids have high school diplomas. Think about that. And all I was, a weed abatement contractor. My wife was a schoolteacher. I never did want to sit up there and make decisions on how to run a city into the ground. You ought to be ashamed of yourselves. You know, this city, I wanted to recall a couple of you a while back, and the only reason I didn't was because I'm pro-growth. And somewhere along the line, this place went to hell in a handbasket. I don't know how to correct it, outside of throwing you all out of office. It's high-riding, he didn't have anything to do with it. J.C. was gone. And I'm not going to blame John Roberts, because you guys were the decision-makers. You could have put the reins on him, and you didn't. I don't know, Terry. You helped build it, and you tore it down. Thanks.
Open up a question from the council, comments?
Well, I'll make a few comments. Mr. Kimpton here got me cranked up, especially when he uses half-truths and lies standing up there. Any talk is cheap. You can get up here and make general statements all you want, wave your hands at big numbers, not have any idea what the decision-making that goes on on this council, whether it's this five or any five before us. Very difficult, very challenging, and very professional decisions. As we sit here right now, this city is probably positioned better than any city in this Southern California region to recover out of this.
Will you please refrain from the hot bursts? We're trying to conduct an orderly meeting here. Everybody has been given the opportunity to speak, and nobody has interrupted you. So please, give everybody the opportunity to speak, and let's conduct an orderly meeting. Thank you.
Where this city is, is where almost every city in this state is right now. It even, as dysfunctional as this state is and this legislature is, this even goes beyond the state of California. It's incredible what has happened to this economy. You can think of all kinds of reasons why, when it started, when it'll end, I'm not sure. But part of the solution to getting out of this is that entrepreneurial attitude, that pro-business attitude that this city and some of the other cities have, of positioning companies like Dr. Pepper. Even back in the times when we put the prison, the federal prison down with 800 jobs out there, tremendous amount of opposition to that. Oh, now we have criminals all over our street, and that was, that's one of the best payrolls in this valley out here. That came out of the closure of the George Air Force Base. You can go through a whole bunch of aviation companies out there. The Rubber Company that wants to expand out there, already got about 400,000 square feet, planning to expand to a million in the near future here. There's other companies sitting down and talking to us right now because of the things that we've done out there with the sewer treatment plant, water facilities, the municipal utilities, electricity. All of those things are very expensive, very challenging. There was mistakes in some of those areas, no fault of this council, no fault of the policy. We are dealing with those deals. We don't go and sit and stew about it and sit around and blame other people. Get back in there and do it. We've got one of the largest redevelopment agencies in the state of California. This city has the potential of coming out of this much faster than any city in this valley, or for that matter, in all of Southern California. The Desert Express is still coming. This is an incredible place to be. Right now, we're in a very tight, we live, we don't live like the federal government, which can print money, and illegally can, and spend a trillion dollars that they don't have, and in a legal sense, the state can't go into debt and spend the kind of money that they're spending, but they do. What they do is they borrow themselves to the point where they have no other cash flow access except to come back, and guess what? Where are they going to get their money from? The counties and the cities. That's exactly where they come. Every time it gets tight, they come back and start taking from us, whether it's our redevelopment agency money or our property tax money. I'm not sure if they've figured out how to get the sales tax yet, but they may do that. But all that is, we've got to, we've got to balance this budget with the resources we have, and still not know what's coming at us from Sacramento just yet. And when that hammer comes down, we'll come back in here and do some more carving, if that's what we have to do. But for my priorities, sitting here right now, for whatever else that we do, the only reason we're a city is police, fire, and streets. And as I sit up here, and as long as I sit up here, those are going to be my priorities. And everybody that sits in this, that lives in this community, has that priority vote from me on our budget and the things that we do. Everything else, God bless us, are secondary to the police, fire, and streets. I live by that code, I vote by that code, and I balance our budgets by that code. And I tell you right now, folks, we're very, we're going to have some tough decisions, just like Apple Valley, Hesperia, the county, and other cities in this county, but a year from now, we're going to, my guess is that we're going to probably be coming out a bit better than some of the other cities. They're still going to be pinching pennies for several years, and we're going to start looking at us, a little bit of a sunlight coming at us because of the business decisions that we made to position ourselves. Now, that's my position. I've been up here over 20 years, maybe that's 20 years too long, but the fact is that I feel comfortable with that, with where we are right now, and I wouldn't want to have any other city dealing with the problem, the level of problems that we have right now. Many of them were no fault of ours, we're just going to deal with them and coming out of that on the other side. So thank you for listening to me now. I'm done.
Well, first, I don't disagree with the frustration and with the anger and the anxiety that the people in the audience are suffering. The prospect of a reduction in benefits or a reduction in pay, or worse yet, the loss of a job, has got to be frightening in these economic times. And I don't fault anybody for being angry and upset and indicating their displeasure with the situation that they're in through no fault of their own, and the extent that the council collectively, or myself individually, have made decisions that if we had them to redo, we might well do that, we can't unring the bell. We are where we're at, and we've got to work through it. Now, not, it's not unique to the city of Victorville. What you're experiencing as employees potentially suffering some financial consequences, or worse yet, maybe the loss of a job, all you have to do is read any of the newspapers or watch any of the TV stations. This is going on in virtually every city in California, virtually every county in California, and obviously at the federal level and at Sacramento. Now, there are some things that have happened that impact this problem, and they are things that the City Council has absolutely no control over. For those of you in the audience who own real estate, and you got your property tax bills reduced because the economy went down, and therefore, property values went down, you were probably very pleased at the reduction in your tax bill, rightfully so. But when that happens, the property tax revenues decline to the city of Victorville. We have no control over that. So to whatever extent there was some happiness over property tax reductions for you as individuals, remember, the city's treasury suffered a corresponding decrease in revenues. That's the way the structure in this state has been for years. People, whether they still have a job or not, are spending less money. Victorville is a high sales tax revenue city. Every merchant in this town is suffering substantial decline in sales, which means that the sales tax revenue to this city have gone down substantially. We have no control over that. You all realize that we went strong and hard for years to become an automobile center in the Victor Valley. Talk to any car dealer, whether it's a new car dealer or a used car dealer, car sales are at the lowest point they've been in years. That's fewer dollars to the city treasury. Now, you may be able to go out and buy a good deal and get a good car for less money, and that's a good thing. But again, that translates into less dollars, less sales tax dollars to the city, and that's not something the city can control. Development impact fees, you know, we were rolling high when people were building homes and building apartments and building commercial buildings and expanding the mall and expanding other retail outlets. Nobody's building. Development impact fees have declined by a huge sum. That is not something that the city can control, but it results in less money coming to the city. Every city receives what we refer to as subventions. That's a catch-all word for the money that Sacramento takes and then decides how to allocate it back to various municipalities and the county. Because of the mess in Sacramento, the subventions have been drastically reduced to every city and county in this state. Again, that impacts on the city's treasury. We have absolutely no control over the decisions made with regard to the subventions. We don't know the final hit that's coming from Sacramento. They have indicated, it's been in the papers, that they intend to take money from the cities. And while we don't know what that number is for the city of Victorville yet, I have seen some publications that have listed the potential hit for the city of Victorville of something in the range of perhaps $3.8 million. We have no control over that. These monies that I'm talking about are the monies that, for the most part, flow into the general fund of this city and are used for the things that most of the employees in this city, as employees, are involved in. Now, does that make it any less painful? Does that make it any easier to cope with? And the answer is no. But for those of you like Kay Schultz and Larry Kimpton, who want to stand up there and make those kinds of comments as though somehow the five of us and make those kinds of comments as though somehow the five of us on this council absconded with money or went out on some kind of a wild spending spree, then, okay, let's, then-
Let's not respond, please.
Then, for those people who feel like that and make those kinds of accusations, you're misguided. That has not happened, and there is no indication that it has happened. It's easy to cast blame, and it's easy to look for somebody to take out your anger and your frustrations. But, big boy, I can accept that. That's the job of being an elected public official. But I think it's important when you, when you decide who you want to crucify for these kinds of financial problems, a vast majority of which are the result of the meltdown in the housing industry and the decisions made in Washington and Sacramento, give us our fair share of the blame. But try to be objective and recognize that there is a lot of the grief that we're going through, that it wouldn't make any difference who the five were that were sitting on this dais. We have a different way of balancing the books. We can only spend what we have. We cannot do what Washington does and print money, and we can't do what Sacramento has the legal authority to do, and that's take money from other units of government. None of us like what we're having to do tonight. I've known Jim Cox for almost 40 years. This is probably the most painful experience he's ever had to go through as a city manager. And I know every one of the department heads personally, and I know the anguish they've gone through trying to come up with some, some package that is as reasonably fair and equitable to all as it possibly can be. So, I said before, and I'm going to say it again, I trust Mr. Cox's judgment, I trust the senior staff's judgment, as painful as this budget request is, that has come to us from our senior staff, I am prepared to support it.
Mayor Cabralis, I, I think there's some confusion. I know our city manager, Jim Cox, spoke about both items 19 and 20, and I believe there's a lot of people here that want to speak on 20. And if that's in fact the case, then maybe it's appropriate that we have them speak at this time.
I should only have one card for 20.
Okay. It just sounded like there were more people in the audience that wanted to speak.
Penny Warren?
This one actually pertains to 19 with the cuts, and I have a question to you regarding to Office of Emergency Services and your guys' plan regarding to transferring to county. In the past, an example of the fire up, the Apple Valley, cannot remember the name of it, that involved Big Bear and Apple Valley. And unfortunately, they made the determination to pull resources from Apple Valley for Big Bear and left parts of Apple Valley burning. I'm afraid that if Sam Redino County has that, anything that we really deem necessary may not be a necessity to them in the event of a disaster. The colon passes an artery easily lost. If we have a huge disaster, we're kind of on our own up here. Now, please think about that seriously before losing that office. What do we do in the event of the big one? And we're it. If hazardous materials and all of that is down the hill and the pass is closed, what do we do? What is that disaster plan then?
That's item 21.
Okay. I apologize for skipping ahead.
We do have Penny Warren on item 20.
It's 21.
Honorable Mayor, I'd like to address you on 19. I came to the city about three years ago. I'm very proud to work for this city. As team councilman, I know you guys are trying your hardest, and this is not personally directed at you. However, these are good people that work here in the field. They're dedicated. They, they go beyond 110% a lot of the times, and if you've ever gone to any volunteering functions, you'll know that. But what I have for you is a couple of questions. In 2004, I believe, John Roberts stood out at SCLA, and he predicted a bright future for us out there, and I still think it's going to come. The question is, can we last till then? He said that back then, there would be a total of, he said, I think, 8,000 to 9,000 jobs by 2011, 2010. As we all know, the downturn is not, they haven't come around. If you were to contract a house, Terry, to build, a guy to build you a house, and you said, "Hey, build me a house for 200,000 materials and labor," and he came to you and he said, "Okay, we're four months in, we're getting a little behind, I need 50 grand more." You say, "Okay." And then he comes to you later and he says, and you're going, "Hey, man, my house ain't built, and he wants 50 grand more." Then he says, "Hey, you know what? I need 100 grand more, now we're up to 350." At what point would you then tell that contractor, "Hey, stop work," you know? I think that's where we went wrong at Foxborough, and not putting, pointing fingers, but now we're trying to sue these people for building this two-bigged plant. At what point should we have said, "Hey, enough's enough? You started with 22 million, it went up, it went up, it went up." Okay, I understand there's sometimes change orders, planning change, whatever it takes, but at some point, should we have not looked at this? And now it seems like, Mr. Cox and everybody, that we are going down the same road with Dr. Pepper. It seems to me like we're putting the cart before the horse. I understand that I'm not privy to all the financial details, I'm just a dumb public words guy. But I'll tell you what, to me, I do the math, and you're going to do a $45 million bond issue for 300 jobs? And knowing where we were at and where we're going, it just seems, doesn't seem feasible to me to be lending money to car dealerships and stuff and then laying off our own employees. All right? It's just, these are good people. Like I said, this is not personal. This is just, I'm proud to work for this city. I love my job here, and I don't want to see anybody else in this room go out that door. Thank you.
Thank you.
My apologies, I thought there were other folks in the audience that wanted to speak, so that's why I asked for that. On 19, first and foremost, I'd like to thank staff for actually coming to us with a recommendation. At the last meeting, special meeting that we held, we were presented numerous different options, no clear direction from staff as to what, what this council should be looking to do. But as, as detailed in the staff report and as outlined by our city manager, Jim Cox, we're at a point where we don't have a choice but to cut the salaries and benefits, and unfortunately, that is something that, that we're tasked with having to do. Regarding having to lay off people, I don't think anybody up here wants to have to do that. I know I don't want to have to do that. Just a sad day that everyone here is being faced with. I, I, I don't know that there's a whole lot more that I'm, I can say beyond what has been said. We've got to turn this ship around. It's, it's going in the wrong direction quickly. And I have, I have a tremendous amount of confidence in our city manager to make sure that he does whatever he can to save this city financially. And unfortunately, these types of cuts and possible layoffs are, are something that he's recommending to this council that, that he's going to have to do. And based upon numbers that, that have been provided to this council, I think, I think that's in fact definitely the case. What worries me even more, and it goes to some of the comments made earlier, is what the state could potentially take from this city. And if it's anywhere near the 3.8 million, unfortunately, we're going to have to be looking at doing even more. And that's the state's fault. That has nothing to do with us here. And unfortunately, we're unlikely to ever see that money again, because when they take it, they never pay it back. And quite frankly, I think the state should shut down, because they obviously can't run up there anyway, so they might as well just give it up. But it's unfortunate with everything that's going on and that we're being put in this position to have to even consider items like this. But unfortunately, in tough times, these are decisions that this council's going to have to make, and I'm prepared to support both requests from our city manager.
I've been here for, I forgot how many years. This is the saddest and hardest thing that I've ever had to do. But my husband and I own a small business, and our son worked for us. We had to cut his pay, and that was hard, too. He has a home and children. But it was either that or we were going to have to let him go. But I couldn't, I can't add to what's already been said. The only thing is, these two items are very sad and hard for me, as one council member, to vote on.
Thank you, Joan. Well, this is a sad day for me also. I've had a long relationship with many of the employees. I've been here, oh, I've been here 33 years, and I've worked with many, for many, many years, 20, 25 years, and as well as some of the newer employees. But I take responsibility for whatever, whatever decisions we made in the past that may have, that contributed to our financial situation. I know there's, there's a state, some pension funds, our revenues are down. But beyond that, for whatever, whatever vote that I, that I took action on, I take responsibility for that. And, and I'll regret some of those for the rest of my life, but I take responsibility. But the situation is that we are in a financial situation that, that we can't continue. We hired Mr. Cox to work on, on our finances and to get our city back on track. And he has the expertise to do this, but the resources, the financial resources are not there. So, again, it's a sad day, but we have to keep the city afloat. I can't tell you how sorry I am, but I am sorry, and I apologize to all the employees But I do accept responsibility for whatever anyone wants to blame you for. If it's Meredith, then I'll accept it. But there are many other, many other things that contributed to this, as Terry explained. The pension funds from the state, our, our tax revenues down, our sales tax is down, everything is down. Even in spite of that, we would have been faced with the financial situation that, that we had to face. So, again, you know, we're caught between a rock and a hard place. We've asked Mr. Cox to look at everything short of layoffs, and there's nothing left except what was articulated in his report. So, I, I too will have to vote, and I regret it, but I have to vote to keep the city afloat. Thank you.
Mayor Cabralis, great heavy heart, I move the recommendations of Agenda Items 19 and 20 as outlined by City Manager Jim Cox. Again.
The item passes, both 19 and 20. I would request a five-minute break. We've been here for almost two hours, and I think we need a little break, and then we'll go into the item 21.
Could I throw out something you might want to do an internet look at? Google, I don't know how it pulls it up, I have it on my computer, but look at California Performance Review, very big words, 2004, California Performance Review. Check it on the internet, see what it is. It's actually the document that was done by an independent group before Governor Schwarzenegger won his recall election, but it had a tremendous amount of lists of things for the state of California to do for itself. If it would do, it would get in to do any of these things, and some of them were very difficult and challenging, the allocations to public education, and all kinds of things are in, in this thing. And at the time, Schwarzenegger thought, "Well, we're cutting up the credit cards, let's look at this list of ideas." To the best of my knowledge, not one of them has been suggested. Now, they're beginning to come back to that document in desperation. It probably won't help this year, but it might help in, in planning the future. But look at that again, I'll give you the words. There's only three words there, California Performance Review, 2004. And see what, see what that document has, it might give you some food for thought.
No, it's still not working. Carol Lee's calling back, it's not on. Oh, now it is. Hello, hello? Okay, thank you.
We convene the meeting, and we'll start with item, or continue with item 21. And this is a request to approve the, the county fire contract for the, the existing contract, extend that, and also to approve the, the transfer of the hazard material fire prevention and emergency services. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Cox.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. This, this item that's before you, and I will just read you the recommendation that the honorable city council approved the county fire 2009, 2010 contract in the amount of $10,238,816, and as for the, for the city general coverage, and for SCLA, $1,605,483. And approve the proposed county fire proposal for OES hazardous material and fire prevention services, alternative proposal in the amount of $1,8792. Prove a contract, and this is the one that, that I think had a little difficulty in a lot of meetings that were back and forth, for the staffing at Station 315, the level of two K, two-paid call firefighters 24/7 in the amount of $190,520, plus $47,128 in one-time setup cost. And before we go any farther, if I might, I'd like to, to thank the Assembly of County Fire Personnel, particularly Sid Holquist, who is here tonight for his cooperation and hard work, and there's two individuals that I'm going to ask him to introduce very shortly. We have gone back and forth, we've had several meetings. At one point, I think we had the county fire chief, assistants, county personnel divisions, and all a roomful of people, to not only look at what is available, but the alternatives and the costs, and to also consider current and past council policies on level of service, response times, equipment, stations, locations, the master plan of the fire, and any and every other item as it affects the fire services for the city. They have been extremely helpful, they have recognized, very much so, because of the financial problems of the county, on what we have been facing, and it is with a lot of their suggestions- those individuals, and so coming up with this level of service was to ensure that there would not be a reduction of services for the area. I know that individuals would like to have this fully staffed, fully paid, and so on, and at one point in time, and I don't have all the details with me, but as I, at one time, we had, we calculated that in order to have that fully funded at the level that some people had requested, actually resulted in another, I think it was seventeen plus or minus layoffs. I was ready to make that recommendation if need be. That unfortunately goes with the territory, that's part of my job, but after discussing it with county and Mr., and Chief Holquist, we were convinced that the level of service could be maintained at the recommendation that is in front of you. Secondly, I'd like to thank Doug Robertson for doing all the work, putting this together, assisting on this matter, taking the lead and, and covering up a lot of the loose ends that I, that I left, because I moved on to other items, and first of all, if there's some additional information or clarification before I introduce Chief Holquist, I'd ask Doug if he has any additional.
Not this time, Mr. Cox.
If I might, Mr. Mayor and Council, if I would ask Chief Holquist to come to the microphone and introduce the thesis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members. Mr. Cox, thank you. I am Sid Holquist, and I am a Division Chief of the San Bernardino County Fire Department. I do serve as your Fire Chief and proud to do so. And as most of you know, I am a lifelong resident of the Victor Valley, having grown up here in Victorville with the ex-Fire Chief Cabrealis chasing me around on occasion. So, it's, it's with great pleasure that I would like to introduce some visitors I have with me here tonight. I have Assistant Chief Peter Briarty, who's right here, also Assistant Chief Tim Sappick, and probably most of you know, one of my battalion chiefs, Warren Peterson. And with that, you should have before you and have had the opportunity, hopefully, to review the proposal for Office of Emergency Services Hazard Materials and Fire Prevention Services. So, with that, I would entertain any questions you may have on that proposal, along with the staffing options that we have presented for Fire Station Three Fifteen.
Keith?
Yes.
I have some cards to people that want to speak to this item.
Sure.
So, why don't we do that, and then my question, some question might come up during that period.
Sure.
So, I'll start with the, Penny Warren.
I volunteer as your Fire Corps Volunteer Coordinator. One of my tasks is to track and record all the volunteer hours for our Office of Emergency Services. And I understand the council is considering making changes in the Office of Emergency Services, so I'd like you to consider a couple of facts. In both fiscal years seven, eight, and eight, nine, emergency volunteers have donated over three thousand hours, using the dollar amounts the IRS allows, it's over seventy thousand dollars a year that we have contributed. Our emergency service coordinator, Robert Barton, in addition to maintaining his regular annual grants, has gone out and gotten additional grants every year from ten to twenty-five thousand and brought that in. I also feel it's necessary to point out that should the city of Victorville experience a large crisis, earthquakes, train wrecks, big chemical spills, et cetera, if we do not have trained FEMA personnel to submit to FEMA the proper forms completed correctly, filed on time, we will not be eligible for any FEMA reimbursement. And this could cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, I'm serious. So, it's my personal opinion that Robert Barton's leadership skills and FEMA expertise have more than offset his salary and bring revenue into the city of Victorville. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Marla Stanfield.
My name is Marla Stanfield, and I'm a resident of the city of Victorville and have been for the past sixteen years. I am an active member of this community, for I am the CERT Coordinator for the city of Victorville. This is a volunteer position, and our volunteers, what our main goal is, is to help this city get back what it needs in a time of disaster. That is our main goal. Our goal is to help the community, it's to help our neighbors, and it is to help our own families. We have trained and volunteered for this city thousands of hours. We hope that we are a model for the entire High Desert. Robert Barton is our team leader, and he has provided our training, direction, vision, and growth for our volunteer efforts. Without his leadership, there is no one in the city who will be able to fill this role in our volunteer organization. Furthermore, I feel our CERT organization and the city of Victorville, our community, and our neighbors will suffer or possibly become non-existent without the guidance of Robert Barton. The city of Victorville Office of Emergency Services Manager and our leader, I hope that you guys would consider thoughtfully that we need his guidance in our program, and without him, it would be very difficult for us to proceed in gaining volunteers for our emergency services volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Mesker.
I apologize for speaking earlier on nineteen. My thoughts go along with theirs as part of the bigger picture in the event of a disaster. The fire I was talking about was the Willow Fire. Because the people that were in command didn't know what was going on, they pulled resources out of the valley and left the valley high and dry. I am fearful that in the event of the big one, or a train derailment that we see every day mile long carrying God knows what, if all those resources are in San Bernardino, that's that much more time to get here. But please take that in consideration before transferring or getting away with, we need some things up here. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Rosser.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Mike Roser. I live in the city of Hesperia, and I work only a couple blocks from here for the county of San Bernardino, the Department of Public Works. I'm an engineering technician. I've been living in the valley for about ten years, but I'm also a volunteer for the city of Victorville in the Office of Emergency Services. We have the Community Emergency Response Team, if anybody doesn't know, when the big disasters happen, those are the people that go out and help augment the emergency service people to clear houses, to do first aid. When the services are overwhelmed, the volunteers are there to help lighten the burden, to ease it. I also work for Emergency Communication Service. I've been an amateur operator for twelve years in after class. In all those years, I've been active in some sort of emergency communication services. The Victorville program is a good program. They, they're well-trained people, they're trained in the Incident Command System, the National Incident Management System, all these are FEMA programs that are kind of mandated for all of the cities to follow. Robert's done a really good job of recruiting and getting these people. As a volunteer, the city's not paying me, and it looks like about me and maybe thirty other people are going to get fired anyways. County is going to look out for itself first. If you farm out OES to the county, and this goes for the Fire Department too, but like the other gentleman said, the county has its own interests. If a big disaster happens, they're going to pull people out of Victorville and everywhere else to deal with things in the valley on the other side of the mountain. I've worked with county ECS, and the, their mindset is on the other side of the mountain, and they don't think of us all that often. Regional disaster, everybody's going to be stretched thin, and the valley's going to be overwhelmed. We're not going to have a lot of resources up here if we don't look out for ourselves. I remember when Dr. Lucy Jones did a presentation here a while back, talking about the big earthquake, and the pass could be closed for weeks. We may not be able to get anything other than the paltry things that they've agreed to put up here for our emergency services. OES may not seem that valuable when things are going well, but in times of disaster, it really pays for itself, and you get a really big bang for your buck. There's a lot of people that really want to see OES hang around, and they're willing to help when something happens. If OES goes due county, that may not happen. Victorville's going to lose a good program. Thank you.
Thank you. Norm Miller.
I just wanted to say here that, you know, I've been here quite a while, listening to you folks and going along or whatever with your decisions and that, but one of the things I've heard an awful lot, and I even heard it tonight, is that you're very strong on fire and safety, and it's one of your primary things on the city. And I just want to ask, which is more important, the trip to China or Station Three Fifteen? The railroad that goes nowhere or Station Three Fifteen that's going nowhere? Trips around the country or Station Three Fifteen? Two-million-dollar clubhouse or Station Three Fifteen? How about the golf course subsidy that's done every year, and will probably be done again this year? Is that more important than Manning Three Fifteen? I had a idea come up to me while I was sitting here listening to everything, talking about tonight, and why don't you borrow some money from the Water Department to pay for the men on the fire station, and then you can again write it off at the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ian Selet.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Everything you've heard on this issue tonight, I thoroughly back up. Thirteen years ago, as a volunteer at Salvation Army, I was asked by the person in charge at that time if I would attend ERG, Emergency Resources Group. Thirty-six organizations that come together in this very building under the direction of Robert Barton. I'll make this very, very brief. If you break up the emergency service that he runs, you're also breaking up the ERG. We will not have a leadership, and all of the volunteers of these thirty-six organizations will not have a direction. As you heard tonight, the county isn't real friendly with us, and over the years, we've requested several things that we need, and we've been turned down. But Robert Barton somehow magically found the money. So, we do have a communication system up here that works. We've been told that one day we'll have a major earthquake, and that's when ERG goes into action and brings in things like the telephone company with a trailer, with work, with phones at work, all kinds of things happen. Somebody calls up Cooley and says, can you bring the big bulldozer? We got a bridge that's collapsed on the I-15, and we need to push the concrete out of the way so we can use that road. You're going to do away with the Office of Emergency Service, you need to think about, it's not just one person in an office in this building, it's a whole lot of people who come together if needed. And I'll just give you one example in closing. You may remember, we had major fire, and I was asked, would I please come to the middle school in Phalen and set it up for evacuees? We had three hundred people there sleeping on cots, thanks to Red Cross, and I got on the phone at two o'clock in the morning, because I had the telephone numbers of managers, KFC, Burger King, McDonald's, and those people were fed three times a day until they were permitted to go back home. See, the red light is on, but I think I've made my point. Please, don't get rid of Robert Barton and the emergency service, because we need it whenever we need it. It's, it's important that we have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dorothy?
Yes. I'm a little concerned. We're going to have two firemen. Why can't we have one paramedic and two firemen? The one paramedic, if this child gets hurt at the park or whatever, we at least have them there. There is a lot of fire trucks that go back into Sunset Ridge and back in that area. They go right by my house, so I know they go by quite often, early in the morning, in the evening. We've got to have our paramedics. We have to have them, at least one at that station, so you have the people covered. I mean, you can take one from one of the other stations, if they have two, put one in there. At least we have the protection we need. I don't think that everybody is thinking the same way as we think, because we're the people that get hurt, and we really appreciate if we can get that worked out so we can at least have one paramedic and one fireman, if that's all we can afford. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last card that I have. Larry.
I appreciate these folks talking about emergency services, because out where I live, we have to deal with the possibility of having an emergency fires and things like that. If you've been down Bear Valley Road, the closest fire hydrant to us is down at the First Trailer Park, just a little bit east of Central. We live several miles away from there. We're the only one with actual water, the Fire Department can come and stick a hose in a tank. I've been looking for a fire truck to buy so I can make available to, and carry water to the fire trucks should there be a fire in our area. Haven't been able to find an eight-hundred-gallon tanker. That's the only one that we can get and run S, run SE plates on as a private citizen. But that, the emergency situation up here is one of the reasons we moved over there. We didn't like the neighborhood all that much, practically had to carry a gun to mow the lawn, and my wife wanted to get out of there, so we moved over there where we don't need to carry a gun, we have them. But, you know, this emergency situation, I believe that that Fire Department, Fire Station needs to be open, and you don't need to tamper with anything. You can always find money, it seems to travel around, or water companies and things like that. That's a big, that's a bunch of money, but I'd sure like to see you think about making a change there and not doing away with this. Thank you.
Where do you live, Larry?
You know where the driving range is on Bear Valley Road?
We live in Apple Valley.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Okay, well, we're talking about the station here in Victorville.
I know, I'd like to see you keep it.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I mean, I was talking about emergencies.
Yeah, I know. Thank you.
Well, we live behind them.
Yeah. Thank you. Sid?
And before the chief speaks, I know he's going to explain this, I just want to clarify that I'm sure many, many members of the audience have did not see the staff write up, but Office of Emergency Services
Well, you live in Apple Valley.
Yeah.
Okay, we're talking about the station here in Victorville.
I know, I'd like to see you keep it.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I mean, I was talking about emergencies.
Yeah, I know. Thank you.
Well, we live behind them.
Yeah. Thank you.
And before the chief speaks, I know he's going to explain this, I just want to clarify that I'm sure many members of the audience have seen the staff write-up, but Office of Emergency Services exist, will continue to exist, and there is no proposal to do away with it.
Yes, that is correct. Our proposal is, in fact, for Office of Emergency Services in addition to hazardous materials and the Fire Prevention Bureau. With that, if you'd like to start with the fire prevention proposal, and then move on to Station 315, if you have any questions for me on the fire prevention proposal. I know for Mayor Cabralis, I believe one of your issues, I understand, was keeping a Coupa in the city, and that is, in fact, a part of our proposal, to keep that Coupa within the city, so that's not a problem. If the city wanted to look at it at a further date, if it was appropriate, we would be willing to entertain that, but the Coupa will, in fact, stay with the city.
When I leave in three years.
When you leave in three years, okay.
You make sure.
You said it.
And I should note that this proposal leaves pretty much everything in place that the city currently has in terms of services. We are not removing any services. They all stay in place, they're all going to be right here at City Hall, just like they always have been. Essentially, we're changing the patch in administration and overseeing and providing some leadership for those programs.
So we will have a call at Station 315?
Yeah, let me move into Station 315 real quick, and just so you all know where I'm coming from and what the issues are with 315. My recommendation, you should all have, hopefully, the staffing options that we provided for Mr. Cox. I'm not sure if you actually saw that or not. My opinion is, and my recommendation would obviously be, to staff that station full-time with a captain, engineer, and a firefighter/paramedic. And I know this council has been outstanding in supporting police and fire, and I know that's what you all want. So I think there's no argument that we want to get full-time staffing in that station. However, I am also very aware, especially after tonight, very sensitive to the current economic situation that the city is going through. So I know it's prudent for me to offer some options for you to consider, and Mr. Cox has done that, staff has done that and has made a recommendation. It's a perfect opportunity to actually do something and form a partnership between the county and the city. We have county stations that can serve the city and currently do. That relieves some of the burden of some of the current city stations, and as you all know, we are really busy in the state, in the city, one of the busiest in the county. So very busy in terms of our emergency incident response. So the options that you see, my recommendation is number one, however, I also know that we need to work at it cooperatively and put something that the city can financially afford for now. My recommendation would be, though, if the council so chose, and working with Mr. Cox, we could look at potential phase-in, possibility of, you know, we start out with a couple of PCFs. And just so you know what we're doing, we have a fire station, Station 37, which is in Mountain View Acres, a tiny little county pocket here in the city. They currently have two PCF staff there, seven days a week, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. In the evening, they go home. This proposal relocates them to Station 315, and then cooperatively, working together with the city, we extend their staffing for 12 hours so that we get the full 24-hour coverage. And just to reiterate on what those PCFs are and their training level, I know Mr. Mayor Cabralis is very familiar with the PCFs and the PCF program, and it goes back to volunteerism and the folks that were up here talking earlier. I admire every one of them. Volunteerism, without volunteers, this country would absolutely not exist. We, in fact, have thousands of volunteers that work for the county. We have hundreds of volunteers here in the High Desert. We're very familiar with the CERT program and all those other kinds of things. We support volunteers and will continue to do so, because they are extremely valuable. So I applaud them. A PCF is another type of volunteer. We pay them for the calls that they go on, but essentially, a PCF does it for one of two reasons. One, they want a career in the fire service. Two, they want to help their community, and they want to give back. They have training that they go through. We just don't put them in a fire station and have them respond out on a fire engine without any training. All of our EMTs are emergency medical technicians, and they also carry defibrillators, so they are able to provide AED, first response. One of the things that we took into consideration when looking at this, Fire Station 313, as you all know, currently responds into that area at Topaz and Euclid, is where the new fire station is at. Fire Station 313, currently, the average response time within the city is about seven minutes for all the fire stations combined. The response time from 313 actually to Station 315 is six minutes. That's, and that's driving without the red lights and siren on, that's just pulling out the station and driving over there. The problem, though, with 313 is that it's the busiest engine company in the city. So can we provide service to that area? Yes, we can. We can meet the average response time of the city, but I think we definitely need to look at how we can phase-in staffing at that fire station, because eventually, we need to put some folks in there. 313 is busy. And at this point, 315 still, there obviously are some residents out there in the Golden Triangle, some folks that deserve fire protection. There's a lot of vacant land out there, you know, a lot of the construction came to a complete stop out there, but I'm confident and sure that it will pick up again and develop, and that station is going to be critical for our needs. And especially if I showed you a response time map, there is a hole in that area that we would need to address. But my offer is to be able to work with Jim, Mr. Cox, with the council, to look at alternatives for staffing that station. We start out at this level, being sensitive to the financial needs of the city, and our goal, of course, is full-time staffing. But, so if you'd like to look at a phase-in or whatever, certainly I can do that with Mr. Cox. So that's a little bit on the PCF staffing, what that is, with our goal and my recommendation of finally putting full-time firefighter/paramedics in that station, and I think we'd all agree that's our goal.
Well, that station, when it was designed and went out to bid for construction, there was an assumption that build-out would continue, when now it's on the edge of...
Right, right. Yeah, it's right on the edge. You know, a lot of vacant land to the south there, to the Aqueduct, and of course, you have the Oragran Wash as a topographic feature on the east side, and then going out into Baldi Mesa. Yeah, eventually, I know, all that's going to pick up. You're absolutely correct, this High Desert has a lot to offer, so we'll need to look at how we can staff that. But I just want to make it clear that I think this is a viable option for now, due to the financial status of the city, it's important that we do that. However, our goal needs to be full-time staffing when we can, working together.
Well, I, you know, having been in the fire service, I would want full-time firefighters there, but knowing that it was constructed with the assumption of build-out and that didn't occur, and with our financial situation, we need to look at other options. And if you're comfortable with this option, you know, I'm not close to that, but I agree that we need to continue working to staff it, and since it's going to be a county, city fire station, I would hope that you would put two personnel out there, and we would put one in the future.
Absolutely, absolutely. And those are the kind of partnerships, I think, that we need to look at for the future. You know, it makes a lot of sense to regionalize and look at fire protection, you know, and sharing costs, just is a very cost-effective way of doing business, so I'm dedicated to that.
We have you on record.
Okay.
A good deal.
That's the only problem with inviting your boss.
You were going like this, and they were going.
Well, Mayor, I think, you know, staff and county have worked very hard at coming up with this. You know, it's problematic to see us opening a fire station and not fully staffing it. I'm really encouraged by Sid coming forward and his willingness to work with Jim and the rest of city staff to ultimately phase this in, and I would hope, and perhaps maybe a couple council members can participate in that process and figure out a proposal to bring back to the council on being able to phase that in over the next year to two years, depending upon our financial situation. But I think we need to get there, we need to get there as quickly as possible, otherwise we should have never built the fire station in the first place, regardless of build-out and what was projected. You know, I think it's upon us that if we do have a fire station that we're going to open, that we ought to staff it appropriately, and the folks in that area, although it may not be as densely populated as other areas in the city, they deserve the same type of services that the rest of the residents have, and we need to get that station there as quickly as possible. You know, if there's other stations in the drawing board, we really need to look at that and determine whether or not we take them forward any time in the future, because we don't want to be presented with a situation like this where we can't... If we're going to commit to building a fire station, we have to commit to fully staffing it, and that's where I'm at. I understand our current financial situation. I'm really appreciative of county and their willingness to work with us on this, because quite frankly, it is your recommendation that we go with option one, that's fully staffing it, but you professionally have to do that. And it's difficult that we're in this position where we'd have to go against a recommendation of someone that's the professional. I'm not the firefighter, I'm not in your position. If you come forward, you tell me that that's what we ought to have there, then that's what we ought to be putting in there. So I just appreciate your willingness to work with city staff and figure out a phased-in approach that can come back to us, council. I think we, you know, ought to look at that as quickly as possible so that we know and we can tell the residents of that area when they can expect to have a fully-staffed fire station.
And the one thing you mentioned was that, or Mr. Cox mentioned, was that 313 is within six minutes.
We did some drive-time studies, knowing that this issue was going to be important, and it actually is about 6 minutes 20 seconds, driving without red lights and sirens. And that's from Fire Station 313 to the driveway of 315.
But you also made a comment, and I can vouch for it, not too long ago...
Yes.
That 313 is one of the busiest stations.
It is. That is, it's actually the busiest engine company in the city, but it's not the busiest station. The busiest station is downtown, of course.
Is it still downtown? Okay.
About 5,700 calls downtown, about 3,000 out of 313. As part of our planning, and as we look at phasing in positions for 315, and your reference, Councilmember McEckra is right on target about looking out to the future, master planning, and looking ahead and seeing where we need to take fire service in the city. And I just want to share with you that we have, my staff and I, have actually started doing that. We have developed a very comprehensive fire apparatus and fire station deployment plan that we'll be able to share with you real soon, and we're going to share it with Mr. Cox. But it actually looks at the fire protection needs of the city of Victorville in terms of its occupancies, its hazards, the values at risk, response time factors. There's a whole lot to look at, future planning for the fire service versus just response times. There's much more to it than that. Obviously, response times are critical, but there's a lot more to it. So we started that process, we have an excellent product going, and we'll share that with you. But we're looking forward to working with staff on these issues as we have been all along.
Questions?
You're welcome. Thank you.
The only comment I would make would be that, you know, in the contract, we really have to be real specific about the Coupa, how it's...
No problem.
And also, we had discussed that our prevention personnel...
They will stay right where they're at.
That needs to be in the contract, so that we can see it.
We'll do that for you. You got it.
Yes, me sure.
And I agree. I love these people. I want them here, too.
And also, to avoid any confusion, you're the fire chief for the city of Victorville, and the direct line of communications or supervision is...
That's correct. It's going to be right, straight to me.
So there's no misunderstanding.
Absolutely.
Vote? I'm going to make a motion. Approve.
I'll second, as long as it includes the recommendation to staff to start working on a phased-in approach and bring it back to council.
Keep Rudy's Coupa.
Keep Rudy's Coupa and everything else.
He knows.
Okay, the motion passes, and we don't go into item 22, which is council reports.
Just to make, remind people of those three words I suggested. Take the time over the weekend or something, sit down there. California Performance Review Commission Committee, it's a 2004 report. Put a lot of effort in that, it has a lot of good suggestions for the state. If you're sitting there struggling about what to tell your state legislators and the governor's office about how to run this state, there are some good ideas there, but they have to sit down and make hard decisions, too. So that's the other flip side of that, is you have an expensive report with some good ideas, and nobody wants to implement them.
I had one comment, and I should have brought that up when we had the public hearings for the helmet. But I live in a track, and I guess this will be directed at John Gargan to look into this. I live in a track that, I guess, the builder abandoned the track, so the landscaping, the landscaping is not done. Yet I got a bill from the city for $260, I believe, for landscaping fees. So you either clean the weeds around that place or give me my money back. And I'll go out there and clean. Anyway, that's it. Thank you. That concludes the meeting. Thank you very much.
That was a good way to end the meeting.